Welcome to the regular January twenty twenty one zoning board of adjustment meeting. Due to the COVID nineteen coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number twelve pursuant to executive order twenty twenty dash oh four. The zoning board of adjustment is authorized to meet electronically. The city of Concord will be using the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen kind of peripheriously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number twelve pursuant to executive order twenty twenty dash odd four. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Zoom platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting by following this link. U S O two web dot zoom dot U S dot slash J slash six one oh nine one nine three one eight. And you should see that up on your screen if you are following us online already. You can also dial the following number and enter the following ID at the prompt. Dial one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine and enter the webinar ID six one zero nine one nine three one eight. Please enter your full name when logging in so attendance and minutes can be properly recorded. Note that telephone participation will be enabled at the end of each public hearing. All participants, please keep your phones and computers on mute unless speaking. Members of the public can also email questions or other public testimony to code at Concord NH dot gov. And staff will read the testimony or question into the record during the meeting. Any member of the public can also call the code zoning administrative office. During the meeting at six oh three two three zero three six four six if they're unable to assess the meeting, access the meeting and if assistance with connecting is required. Materials can be requested from the code zoning administration division by email or by calling and leaving a message at six oh three two two five eight five eight oh. Or meeting agendas and links to cases can be accessed at Concord NH all one word dot gov slash two eight zero slash zoning dash board dash of dash adjustment. We will be taking the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda this evening. We have two different types of cases. One is a request for rehearing. We conduct those hearings a little bit differently than we do variants and special exception hearings. And the second case will be a request for a variance. In the case of the variance request, we will ask the appellant to come forward and speak in favor of his or her case, giving us the reasons for the request or why they feel the request is justified. And we ask them to confine their testimony to ten minutes if at all possible. Following that, we will open the floor to anyone who is in favor of the appeal or anyone who is in opposition to the appeal. And following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from the code enforcement office before closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In the event that testimony has been offered that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new arguments prior to our closing. The public testimony portion of the hearing under most circumstances and certainly tonight, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next. With that, I'll move to the first item on our agenda this evening, which is fifty twenty. This is a request for a rehearing for Bubbles Enterprises LLC. The has everyone on the board had a chance to review the written submission from the from attorney side? Looks like everybody's nodding. Okay. For the benefit of the public, when we consider a request for rehearing, we have certain criteria. We do not normally take testimony, although we can. We we the person requesting the rehearing needs to convince the board that either we made an error in law, that there was a relevant piece of factual information that was not available to us on the night of the hearing. Or that we made an error in procedure that somehow prejudiced the hearing. Those are the only criteria for the granting of a rehearing. Under all circumstances this evening, I will pull each individual member of the board as to his or her views on the topics at hand. And then we will also take a rule called vote in the event of a motion. So the first item is the Bubbles Enterprises request for a rehearing. I'm going to start with Mr. Wallner, who appears to be muted.
I'm unmuted.
Okay. Nick, did you see anything there that you thought justified granting of a rehearing?
I did not, but let me let me say a couple of things. We had a request here for an unusual lot and we basically looked at two variances. And we applied the five criterias of a variance request in this particular case. We were offered a lot of information that really wasn't for us to consider or for us to decide, which is really at the hands of the superior court. And if we put that aside, I think we we did the right thing. And I didn't see that we committed any errors.
Ms. Specter Morgan.
I completely agree with Nick.
Ms. Scott.
Thank you. I wasn't at the original hearing, but I had read the material from that meeting. I read the minutes. I read the material tonight. And although there's a lot of information, the only thing the board has the purview on are the two variances, not all the other issues and concerns and and arguments about it. So with just those two items that we have control over, I did not see anything that the board seemed to err on or that any new information provided would have changed my view or changes my view now that a rehearing is justified.
Mr. Winters.
Yes, I I agree. I think that the the motion was was well presented in the sense that it raises some interesting arguments. But I I again have to agree that it's it's not the right forum. The very if if it's accurate, then they're going to have problems developing the the property and our decision won't really impact those problems. So I I don't think it really changes our decision on the variance, which we granted, which was somewhat narrow compared to the all of the issues discussed.
Thank you. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said. Is there anyone who care to make a motion?
I move that we deny the request for a hearing.
Is there a second?
I second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. I think Mr. Winters beat Ms. Scott by a tenth of a second. To second the motion, the motion is to deny the request for rehearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right. In that case, we'll call for a vote, starting with Mr. Wallner.
Aye.
Ms. Specter Morgan.
Aye.
Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Winters.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The vote is unanimous and the request for a rehearing is denied. That moves us to our next case this evening, which is case odd three twenty one. Pucker, if I mispronounce this name, I apologize. Jadchak or Jadzak for Automotive Supply Association LLC. The applicant wishes to convert existing space into a microbrewery to include a tasting room, merchandise area and production area and request variances to Article twenty eight two four J section L six. To allow for the canning, bottling and packaging of beverages and to Article twenty eight seven three, location of required parking to provide three dedicated spaces versus eleven spaces on the same lot. And the use and an agreement as the use and an agreement to have sixteen spaces assigned in the parking lot across from the use. These requests are for two thirty one South Main Street in the CU Urban Commercial District. See, was there anything more on that? No. Is Mr. Jadzak here?
It is. I am. Hi, Chris. And you did a great job the last time. Jadzak is the right way to pronounce it.
All right. Thank you. Would you like to fill us in on the reasons why you believe that the variances are justified?
Sure, absolutely. Well, first, I I want to thank on behalf of myself, Yarbird Brewing and the proposed owner of our proposed location. Thank you guys for your time and consideration for the appeal that I'm submitting to you guys tonight. I also want to thank David Hall. He's been super helpful throughout this whole process of putting this application together. I just I'll give you a little bit of background about myself. I've spent the majority of my professional life working in corporate marketing until moving into the craft beer industry a few years ago. My previous positions took me all across the country, but I'm happy to be back in my hometown working and I did work at another brewery in Concord up until recently. It's no surprise that I found my career in beer as my great grandfather was the first recipient of a liquor license in Massachusetts after prohibition. He went on to build the largest Anizer Bush distributor on the East Coast. And even though the family sold the business in the mid two thousands when I was a young kid, I always admired his pride in building a a great brand and the dedication that he had in making his customers happy. So I'm asking your approval of this application and appeal to carry on this tradition. So we're looking at the Article twenty eight dash two dash four section L six, which would allow us to operate a microbrewery in the space that you see on the screen. Additionally, we're requesting the recognition of sixteen parking spaces, which our landlord has dedicated to us and are located across the street where that cursor is currently hovering. The proposed it's a little strange how it's worded in the in the notification, but for the proposed use, we would be required eleven parking spots. We actually have sixteen. So we we meet and exceed the amount of parking spaces that would be required for such an operation. This appeal should look really familiar to the board. In twenty fifteen, Conquer Craft Brewing presented a nearly identical application to allow for the bottling and retail sales of their product in the central business performance district. We're asking for the same appeal with the only difference being that our location is in the neighboring zoning district of the urban commercial district instead of the central performance district. The proposed scale of our brewery is actually half the size of both the breweries that are currently in Concord. And we intend to carry out a pretty small scale operation for at least the the short term future. As mentioned in our application, current use allowances in this district would allow us to operate if we identified ourselves as a restaurant and a brew pub opposed to just a brewery. However, our intention isn't to be a bar nor a restaurant, but rather a unique brewery with an upscale tasting room in which our customers can come in and sample and purchase our product. We would only be open until about nine o'clock at the latest and would be limited as to how much we can serve as defined by the regulations set forth by the New Hampshire Liquor Commission. All of our operations would be confined to the least space and wouldn't interfere with surrounding businesses or residences. That's because we have dedicated dedicated off-street parking, a private loading dock, which you can see that sets basically in that L right there behind the building. Which is a private drive, which is also part of the property of our landlord. And yeah, so you know, there also wouldn't be any sort of outside noise pollution as all of our production and tasting room activities would be taking place inside. In exchange, we're hoping that, you know, we provide another reason for people to visit Concord while providing restaurants and stores with another local product to sell. And I, you know, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you guys might have towards the application. And I believe the owner of the property, Bobby Siegel, is also on the call. So if he has or if there's any questions that I can't necessarily field about the building, I hope that he can guide you guys. So yeah, I appreciate you guys hearing my case and if you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Jadzak, I realize I made a mistake of omission. I forgot to swear you in. So I'm going to create a new legal precedent and swear you in retrospectively.
Do I have to go through that all over again? Okay.
You you promise promised that you just told the truth and nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
Okay. Questions from the board? Yes. Ms. Specter Morgan.
So one of the criteria is that there's got to be something special about the property that makes the application of the zoning ordinance to it affected differently than other properties in the area. And you don't really explain that in your application. You explain why this property is particularly well suited for your needs, but you don't explain what it is about the property that makes the ordinance affected differently. So I was hoping you could do that for me.
Um, sure. So unless I misunderstand your question, there's not really a defined use for a brewery or and the only acceptance for the bottling and production of beverages is restricted to industrial zoning. So the reason I'm applying for this is just for the the reason that it's not a current use of the building. If if I'm misunderstanding your question, then by all means.
You're not answering my question, so let me try again.
Sorry, I'm new to this.
What is it about this property that makes the fact that a brewery is not permitted affect it differently than other era other properties in the zone? Other than your claim that the property is particularly well suited for your use?
Um, I'm sorry, I I don't quite understand the question. So, yeah, I I'm sorry. I just I don't I don't understand the question.
Maybe one of my fellow board members can phrase it better than I can because I'm having a hard time phrasing it better than that. Andrew looks ready, willing and able to try.
Well, I might, but I'm gonna let let correct me if I get it wrong, Laura. Let me let me try. So I think what she's getting at is it it there's got to be something unique about this parcel, like this lot that is differentiated from the from nearby lots that would make it. Make your request appropriate based on the difference in this lot versus other lots.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I I think I can answer that. Thank you for the clarification. So I think what says this parcel or this building and lot, aside from most of the others, is just the fact, I mean, it comes with off-street parking, which very few businesses downtown do, including most restaurants and one of at least one of the breweries downtown. The other reason is that the the impact to the the area would be minimal compared to most breweries or businesses that are located on Main Street or the surrounding area where we're granted with the opportunity of having a private driveway, private loading dock. And are also conveniently located downtown. Most of the I've been on the prowl for properties for a while now in order to do this, and this was the the most logical place in order to put a brewery in this area, in my opinion. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Um, so the the you only have three, if I understand the parking situation, you have three spaces on your lot and then you're leasing eleven from the building across the street?
Um, so we have three spaces in the back of the building for staff only. And then we actually have sixteen spaces across the street dedicated for our customers opposed to the eleven that would be required for the use that we're proposing.
So are they um, is that a lea- is that is that lot owned by the same owner as your building or is that a lease you've already entered into or could enter into with the owner of that lot?
No, that so that is also owned by Automotive Parts Association, which is Sunel, and they're located across the street. But it is the same owner and it's built into our lease that we would have sixteen dedicated parking spots to us at all times. And additionally, after hours of Sunel, they're gonna give us or they're willing to allow us unlimited use of that parking lot after business hours, which is about four o'clock.
I'm sure you've thought about this, but I don't want but you know, one concern I'd have is that road, I I do see a crosswalk there, but that road, you know, can be fairly heavily traveled. And if you've got people in there at night, I'm not, I don't think people are going to be drinking that much, but they're tasting beer and lingering around. Is there any concern you have about them trying to cross the street in the dark?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I I have thought of that. So part of my plan is to implement some signage on both sides of the street just to direct people to where our parking is located. It's also something that I have considered as far as the, you know, the the visibility of the crosswalk and the safety of crossing it. There is a lot of lighting in that area. I at least I've crossed that street before and I had no problem doing so. But if there's anything that we could do in order to make that a better situation, we'd be more than happy to explore that.
Nick? Yeah, let me add clarification. I believe there is on-street parking allowed on the same side as the the property that you're looking to occupy?
Uh, that's correct. And and actually, in the application, I believe I I declared or I I went out myself personally, measured all of the the amount of footage of on-street parking on both sides. I I figured that there would probably about be about twelve and a half spaces within a hundred feet of the building.
And at nighttime, uh, do you you see those spaces being used by neighboring businesses?
I have not personally, and I I've actually lived two blocks down the street. So I I really I rarely if ever see it used just basically because there's no businesses that are open in that area around that time. And all of the residences around there have off-street parking.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Laura.
Had to remember to unmute myself. Um, so I just wanted to just, and I don't know if I missed it, so I apologize if I if you had it in your application. What hours are you looking to be open?
Sure. Um, so it it I believe I put it in the application. If I don't, I apologize.
You did.
Okay, so we would during the weekdays, Tuesday through Friday, we would be open from four to eight or nine. Probably eight because it from my previous experience at the other brewery in Concord, nobody comes in after eight o'clock. And we don't want to be a bar either, so that's why we try and, you know, set the time at about eight o'clock. Saturdays would be noon to eight or nine and then Sundays noon to five.
Okay. Um, and then you're not, you're you're just being a you're not trying to be a restaurant. You focused on that. So yours is really more just come in, buy, taste and leave. It's not usually a place where people linger, right?
Yeah, that's correct. So the way that the New Hampshire Liquor Commission allows microbreweries to operate is that that we are either able to give out samples of our beer. Or if we offer food up to two sixteen ounce pours of any of our offerings. So we we have strict limits that we have to go by in order to maintain our good status with the New Hampshire Liquor Commission. And and usually people would stay about fifteen to twenty minutes, I would say, on on normal.
Okay, so you're doing more of the tastings than the two sixteen ounce pours?
Yeah, that's correct. I think about eighty percent of our sales would be retail purchases to take home with them versus the actual, you know, draft tastings that we do in-house.
And then just one final question. So and and I'm just trying to equate it. I'm not a a beer drinker. So you're going to be more like Oddball Brewing in Sun Cook, that kind of size?
So our size will be basically right in between Oddball and Conquer Craft. Conquer Craft's fifteen barrels. Oddball is one barrel. We're going to be seven barrels. So yeah, right, right in the middle of the road there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Laura, you can.
And you'll actually be brewing at this site, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
This might be more for Craig, but what so you're saying a restaurant or a bar would be allowed in this district, but you're not because you're is is this considered along lines of manufacturing? Is that why?
Yes, sorry. No, yeah, I'll just explain that a little bit too. Right. Normally this fall, well, this does fall under the manufacturing, bottling and beverages use category. It is an industrial classified use. So and and I'll also predicate this by saying, you know, these microbreweries are something that need to be looked at and included in the ordinance. You know, it's something that's more recent and they've caught hold and it's something that we got to look at and adjust to. But i- i- if they were running a restaurant and and I think there's actually different rules within the RSAs about this too. But they fall into the restaurant category. So the restaurant is the principal use. The brewery portion of it is accessory to that restaurant. So in that case, they can be in a district that would otherwise allow a restaurant where they just want to do the brewing, the manufacturing. They don't fall into that category. They stay with the commercial bottling of beverages.
Hmm. Sure. And and just to follow up with that, so basically, you know, what we're appealing for is is being able to package and sell that re- in a retail setting versus in a sit down and eat and drink setting. And so if we weren't able to operate that way, we could theoretically open a restaurant, call ourselves a microbrew or a brew pub and operate as a restaurant and serve beer the same way. We just wouldn't be able to sell it, package it the way that we that we want to.
Any other questions? Craig, I have a question for you. In this particular zone, could you have a neighborhood market?
Uh, probably. Let's see. Skim into my handy dandy.
Or a convenience store, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I just.
There is one right down the street.
There we go. Sales of goods and merchandise in an establishment less than five thousand square feet. And yes, that would be permitted by right.
Okay, thank you. I guess we'll move on then to testimony from the public. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
Oh, just a couple of, you know, thi- this whole property down here, the exclusion of what used to be residences, but I think most of those are commercial uses now too. You know, they they go back to the industrial age there. The gas holder house is over here. So many of these buildings were designed as industrial style buildings. So they have some unique qualities that really hold over for an industrial type use, a high bay, solid.
so high bays, solid floors, things of that nature. So for other types of uses, they probably really aren't as suitable or other uses allowed in the district, so, that's all I got to say.
Very much. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. And I will solicit the ideas or the thoughts of the board members. We have a request for, we have two variances. I do have one other question for you, Craig. Why do we have two apps?
Because, now, now I've forgotten, I was, the, oh, we just needed additional information and some, you know, I think the original one was just for the use, and then we decided that they needed a additional one for the parking, and so it just completed it as two applications.
So we could look at it as one?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Start with Andrew. What are your thoughts on this? We need to, your view.
That was on purpose.
I gotta, I gotta remember that excuse.
Yeah, that's a good one. You know, my, this isn't probably a great legal justification. I mean, my, my heart says this is a good use in this location, so, and that's, that's what my feelings are. I do, I, I was listening carefully to the answers to Laura's question, and he obviously didn't really have a very good one. So I'm trying to help him out a little by looking at it here. It's, this is a really weird zone, right? I say, weird's not the right word. This is a, I'm looking at the zoning map, I mean, this is, it's a very, very small zone. It's like a blip if you drove by it, and it almost seems that it's sort of a hodgepodge zone, and knowing this particular location, as I'm sure everyone here does, it's sort of a, it doesn't, it doesn't have like a great function right now. It's probably something the city's looking at to improve on. It's sort of just like a, like a mid, like a hodgepodge of various things. So, you know, in that sense, in this building where Taylor Rental used to be, I think it's been vacant for a while. It probably doesn't have much demand there for any particular use. So I think, also coupled with the fact that, yeah, it's, it falls under food processing, bottling, but it's, it's not very intense use for that type of, you know, it's not like hood milk or something where it's a heavy, it's really more of a, it is somewhat closer to a restaurant. So I think, I almost feel like every parcel in this little strip is somewhat unique just because of how old the zone, the buildings in the zone are, and how they're all laid out pretty differently. So I'd be inclined to grant the variance.
Ms. Scott?
I feel sort of the same as Andrew. I don't know if the property's unique. I think the use is unique. It's something that's not clearly defined and spelled out in the zoning ordinance, because it is a newer type of business that no one could have predicted, and, you know, it takes forever to change zoning. Knowing some of the smaller breweries and how they operate and where they operate, I think it'll be a great use for this property. It's not intensive, it won't disrupt the neighbors. I am a little concerned about where the parking is, and are people really gonna walk to the crosswalk? But that's just human nature of figuring out to how to be safe. But I do think that the property itself is a holdover on that zoning, should be looked at to make sure that the uses that would be compatible there are actually listed as allowed uses. So I'm inclined to grant the variance, grant, is, variance is, so.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I don't disagree with anything that's been said. But, as you all have heard me say before, the fact that a property is well-suited for a particular use is not a basis for a variance. There's gotta be something unique about the property, and there's nothing in the application or whatever tonight that tells me there's anything unique about the property. The other thing I would note is, I went to school very close to an Anheuser-Busch brewery, and I know the smell that can come from brewing. And I know this, obviously, is on a much smaller scale. But there's a reason things like this are put in a different zone, in an industrial zone, because there aren't neighbors there that might be affected by things like smell and noise and such. So I don't think it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance or in the public interest either. So I would vote to deny the use variance. I have no issues with the parking variance, given where it is and the kind of business that they're anticipating, and the on-street parking, and the limits on what they can serve. I'm not worried about people stumbling out drunk and not being able to find the crosswalk.
Well, I'm inclined to support it. When you look at that whole block, it's a conglomeration of multiuses, both on South Main Street and behind, there's a lot of small businesses behind there. And I'm not concerned with the parking due to the fact that most of the time that they're open, I think the spaces in front of it would be available. So I think the issue of crossing the street is a minor one. So I'm inclined to support this. Craig, has there been any complaints about, there is another microbrewery in town. Have there been any complaints about smell?
Well, the other, if you're, Lithermans is down in an industrial park. No, and no, I haven't received anything on that. The Concord Brewery down in downtown area, off of Store Street, no, I haven't had any complaints on them either.
Okay, thank you. I'm inclined to agree with my colleagues who support the, support approving the variance. I think that, as, I think it was Nick, or maybe it was Andrew, pointed out, these buildings are all oddballs, and the, they're, as Craig mentioned, they're all leftovers from previous industrial, quasi-industrial uses. So you could make an argument probably that any one of them might qualify. I also think that we're in a little bit different situation than we are in some other cases in that the use that they're asking for really doesn't have a home in the, in the zoning ordinance per se, that it's not an industrial strength brewery. Its retail side is, to my mind, no different than the convenience store down the street that sells beer by six-pack. So I, and it's certainly the coming and going of people to sample beer is no different than a restaurant. So I think all those various individual ingredients come together to create something that is consistent with the intent of the ordinance and the compatible with the neighborhood. Would anyone care to make a motion? Move approval. Is there a second?
Well, Laura, do you want to split them?
You can either split the motion, or I'll split my vote.
Okay.
Why don't we split? All right. Next, would you like to move approval of which one? Let's move approval on permitting the conversion, which is variance number one. Very good. Second on that?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? All in favor? Around the room here again, Mr. Winters?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
Aye.
And Mr. Warner?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And then the second variance, which was for the parking across the, some of the parking across the street. Move approval. There's been a motion made for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? All right, we'll start around the room again. Mr. Warner?
Aye.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Winters?
Aye.
And I so, also vote aye. And that means that both of the variances are granted. And I believe that takes care of our regular agenda this evening. We have no minutes from the last meeting, because we had no last meeting.
But we do have minutes from November's meeting.
Oh, we never did deal with those. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
So moved.
There's a motion. I haven't heard a second yet. I think Laura had made the motion before me, so I'll second it. All right. Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
I'm gonna abstain, because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. I didn't do the round robin vote there, but we're going to, we're gonna pretend I did. Now, the next question is, Craig, is there any other business to come before us?
Nothing that I had on the agenda.
Very good. In that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
What would you do if we didn't make that motion? I'd just sit here till somebody broke.
Just all sit here staring at each other.
And you'd all be alone, because I'd be signed out.
Craig, thanks for your role this afternoon. I'm a little bit of a pickle. Dave would take pity on us and shut the whole thing down.
Wait, Craig, I just, and Rose, I just noticed that Dave's not here. Did you guys, you guys figure out the?
Oh, there he is.
He's been hosting the whole night, every night.
Oh, I missed you on my screen.
He's the host with the most.
Okay.
The show, I'm just gonna let him keep doing it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Nice, stay safe.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.